Okay. Welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, December 19, 2022, 6:00 P.M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean is excused this evening, and I do believe that Commissioner Reed was going to be a couple minutes late.
Okay. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient, as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes for 11:1622, 11:2122, 11:2221, and 7:1822 were received. Any corrections? If not, Madam Clerk, they will stand as submitted. Proclamation. Well, we were very proud of our Capital High School for taking on the championship, and we want to congratulate them. And so this evening, we are, we put together a proclamation for the Capital High Brewing Football Team. And it reads, "City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas the Capital High Brewing Football Team won their 11th state championship by defeating the Bozeman Hawks 34 to 14 on November 18, 2022. And whereas the Capital High Brewing finished with a 12 to 0 record under the leadership of Coach Kyle Mahalish and assistant coaches Lee Carter, Take McMahon, Reed Christensen, Jeff Mannahan, Kobe Furlong, Jared Hunt, Jim Hogan, and Matthew Rean. And whereas the freshman coaches included Leva Dawes, Tom Quinn, Shannon Belix-Blakes, Eric Bueller, Chad Opitz, and Ryan Riches. And whereas the athletic trainers were Sean Ruff, assisted by manager Ellery Winddecker, Elena O'Connor, Abby Yisk, Alice Dormadi, and Delani Stewart. And whereas, when asked how he felt on winning the championship, Coach Mahalish replied, "This senior class has been a joy to coach. We, as coaches, have enjoyed our time with these young men the last four years. They were built as, they were built as great when they were a younger team, and they met those expectations. These seniors have been a great, have been great in the classroom, weight room, and in the community. With a 'we, not me' mentality, we forever be champions." Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Wilmut J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim December 19, 2022 as Capital High Brewing Football Day. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Helena to proudly acknowledge their dedication and accomplishment. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 19th day of November, 2022." Coach, you want to come up? That's the proclamation, okay? If you want to say a few words, you just go to the counter there.
Thank you, Mayor.
On the other side.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, I appreciate it. Thank you all for having us. I know the kids are pretty busy tonight. We have basketball practice, wrestling practice. One of the, one of the big things we do preach at Capital High School is being involved in multiple sports. You're not only a football player, but you're a wrestler, and, but most importantly, you're strong in the, you're strong in the classroom. And we had our banquet the other night at Carroll College. I think we have 116 kids on our roster, and I want to say 83 of those young men were academic all-state. So I always do that first, as our banquet starts, because I think, yes, being an all-state football player, all-conference football player, those things are important. But I think most importantly, what those kids do in the classroom is, is very great. Capital has a longstanding tradition. I was just talking to Mr. Schlesker about that. You know, as a head coach, it's good to kind of get the monkey off the back. I don't know if most are familiar with Capital High Football, but every head coach in the history, there's now, it hasn't been a lot, I'm the sixth, and every head coach has won a state championship or multiple state championships. So I was talking to Coach Chauncey in Target the other day, and he goes, "Yep, looks like you finally got that monkey off your back." So that's, so it's good to be a part of that club. Capital High School over the history, since 1970, what, '03 or '04? Capital High has a 73% winning percentage, so that means every year Capital High is winning 73% of their games. We take pride in that. Everybody's normally out to get us. But most importantly, like we said, it's the 12th state championship. Good group of young men, very proud of them. I think on Wednesday, we're going to have eight or nine for sure sign football scholarships to attend universities within the state of Montana. Not only athletically, but all of them will receive some type of academic help from the institutions, because like I said, we have quite a few smart kids on our football team. So, very proud and appreciative. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody want? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Coach Mahalish, congratulations to you and your team, 12-0, impressive season, but more impressive in the classroom. I think that's great, and sets a good example. Thank you to your leadership and your coaching staff's leadership, and go Brew.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just would like to say thank you for being here and, and for the recognition that you've received tonight. It's quite a legacy. I'm a Capital High alum, although I've never played football, but...
You're still a Bron.
Yeah, that's right. But as you pointed out, the, the winning percentage that, that Capital has has just been amazing, and it's reflected in how many times they've been in the state championships. So, thank you for getting us there and, and for, and...
And getting the monkey off your back.
Yeah, and the success that you had this, this season. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. ADA Compliance Committee, reappointment of Gina Lidle to a second term on the ADA Compliance Board. Term will expire September 1st, 2022, 25, sorry. Is there anything you want to say? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would move to reappoint Gina Lidle to a second term on the ADA Compliance Board. Her term will expire September 1, 2025.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries 4 to 0.
Thank you. Consent agenda. We just have one motion. A, Final Passage of Ordinance Amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Section 11-2-3 and 11-2-4, and Title 11, Chapter 38, Section 11-38-2 and 11-38-3 of the City of Helena Zoning Regulation. B, Final Plot for the Commercial Phase III Minor Subdivision Creating Two City Lots of Containing 13.53 Acres From Track 1B As Shown On Certificate of Survey 3226447 In The Records Of Clerk And Recorder Of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Resolution Establishing CCB, interim City Manager Agreement Amendment, the Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number 20495 and 20639 To Eliminate The Monthly Water And Waste Water Charges That Fund The Residential Water And Waste Water Service Line Replacement Loan Program And Amending Resolution To Number 20488.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If possible, I would like to separate Consent Agenda Item E for a bit of discussion.
Thank you. Attorney Doctor? What's that process look like?
Mayors, commissioners, it does provide in the bylaws for the city commission that you can request it be removed, and that the mayor can just consent to doing so, and then it would be in the regular items. And so you can just agree, and you would, it would then be heard during regular items.
Thank you. I don't have a problem. Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, if I may, then you would just vote on, and may, this may be obvious, but A, B, C, D as consent agenda items, and then E would become a regular item to, to discuss.
You bet.
Thank you.
So... Mr. Mayor? Any discussion on this? Okay. Any public comments on this topic, consent agenda?
Hi, I, my name's Scott Raznov. Full disclosure, I'm a former employee of the City of Helena. I just wanted to say a couple words in support of the service line loan program. I realize that this has been moved from the consent agenda, but I think that it's appropriate to reevaluate the funding, and appropriate to discontinue the, the fees at this point, but I think that this is a good program. And the loans being available are important for homeowners in the City of Helena, and it can help people, keep people in their houses, and it, it really does matter, and the, the program is valuable. And so I urge you all to consider keeping it, the program in place. But as everything that's written now, that I read in the ordinance or resolution, looked, looked appropriate to me, so that's all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have, oh, okay, come on.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for continuing the work of the Citizens Conservation Board, we appreciate...
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Diana Hammer. I'm currently Chair of the Citizens Conservation Board. And I want to thank you for continuing the work of the CCB with the resolution before you tonight. For the past five years, the CCB has worked really hard to support and advise the city on sustainability measures, and I just want to hit a couple of highlights that we've accomplished over the past couple of years. Passage of the city's clean electricity goal of 100% clean electricity by 2030, and this was adopted by the city in 2021. Passage of the city's waste reduction goal of 35, reducing our waste by 35% by 2030, and 50% by 2040, and this was also adopted by the city this year, earlier this year, and funding of the Strategic Plan for Waste Reduction to help achieve that goal. And then the, the CCB has been collaborating with city staff to raise awareness that we live in a high desert, it's arid, we need to conserve water, and we've, the city also has a goal of reducing the per capita water consumption within the city through education and outreach related to water conservation measures, water-wise brochures, workshops, and other zero escape demonstration projects that the city undertook in front of the Law and Justice Building. So this, CCB has expressed our unanimous concerns over certain aspects of the resolution. We've written to you, and I, we continue to have those concerns, especially regarding term limits. We have a very active and well-informed board, we have a lot of expertise on our board, and with the term limits, we see them as being unnecessary, because each time a term would end, the commission has the ability to reappoint or not the members. So the term limits seem, you have that built into the process already, so putting them in the resolution in the opinion of the CCB is unnecessary. So, and I guess finally, I would like to say, if, if Helena is, is going to be a leader like a capital city really should be, certainly in terms of sustainability, resilience, and building a better community, we need to lead on climate and climate action, and that's the work that the CCB is doing. And I worry that we will lose a lot of institutional knowledge and expertise moving forward with this particular resolution. So with that, I thank you, and have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Commission. My name is Denise Roth Barber, and I am the Helena Citizens Council Representative on the Citizen Conservation Board. So I want to speak to the language in the resolution regarding term limiting the HCC rep. As it says, "One HCC rep to be appointed annually by the HCC membership with no representative serving consecutive terms." I'm not a lawyer, but I don't believe that the city commission has the jurisdiction to do that, because we are an independent body, we're elected, so we determine who represents us and for how long. And in fact, the HCC just went through several months of reviewing our bylaws and ensuring that they were up to date and in sync with the charter. And our current language in the bylaws is that "The Chair Shall Appoint or Remove Representatives To Serve As Voting Members In City-Alotted City Advisory Boards." So we've already addressed that in our bylaws, and the language as written in this resolution is contrary to the HCC's desires. So if however, the city commission believes you do have the jurisdiction to do that, the HCC requests a legal justification for overriding our bylaws. But, you know, to speak to the, the spirit of term limits, which is to allow for greater participation by interested members of the public, we already have mechanisms to do that. First and foremost, HCC members, as you know, are voted in, so you have to first win your election. Secondly, or reelection if you want to stay on a board. Secondly, if somebody's not representing the HCC very well on an advisory board, the HCC already has a mechanism in place to remove them. Or, like, I've been on the HCC, the CCB for the HCC for several years now, if somebody else on the HCC says, you know, "You're doing great, but I, I'm kind of interested in doing that as well," HCC can address that. The, the council decides who represents them. So I just, I think you should strike that language, unless you feel very comfortable with the legal basis for telling the HCC how, who should represent them, not who, but for how long. So, thank you for your consideration, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, oh.
Mayor, as a member of the, members of the commission, thank you for having me. My name is Ann Brodsky. I too am a member of the Citizen Conservation Board. I was appointed in 2017. I'm an at-large board member. I'm here to testify, the CCB submitted an alternative resolution to the city commission, which in fact I drafted, so I'm quite familiar with that. I thought it was a far better resolution, both in terms of clarity, in terms of answering some questions that I think still remain unanswered in the current resolution before you, and as a matter of policy. But I want to go back to, and I guess I'm going to speak, and my biggest objection, as some of the others have said, is regarding the term limits provision. And I, I want to go back to 2017, when I was contemplating applying...
Can you do that in two minutes?
I will try to do that really quickly. When I was contemplating trying to apply, or applying to the, be a member of the CCB, and I wrote to a friend of my husband's, who's a climate scientist, he's actually a Nobel Prize winner, he lives in Missoula, and asked him whether this is a feel-good kind of board, or, you know, because I'm not interested in doing that, I wanted to do work for climate. And his response to me, I printed out his email right before I came down here, he says, "I think our most important progress is at local levels, global scales are where policy emerges, but local day-to-day life is where change actually happens." And the work of the Conservation Board and climate is complex, the work of the city government is complex, we're still asking staff and, and officials, how do we communicate things? Because we don't even know that. But to cut off the terms of members, which then would result in perhaps not the best appointment to the board, I think is, is a shame, if that's the policy that the city chooses to enact. I mean, I understand reasons for term limits, but I think this work is complex. I think climate change is extremely complex, I think it's the most important issue that our world faces right now, and I guess I think the question is whether the city is really interested in, you know, the feel-good, or is going to walk the walk too. And I don't think it's in the interest of the citizens of Helena, or the city of Helena, to, 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 to term off members of the Conservation Board. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised, and I've received no written public comment online.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Following on the, the point raised by the HCC representative, would it be possible for the city attorney to give us her thoughts, or to indicate whether or not it's possible to give thoughts without preparation on the matter of the legality of the HCC jurisdiction? Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, the, I have not looked into the specific issues that were raised during public comment, this is the first I've heard of it. I do know that the HCC is created by the city commission, and they serve at the pleasure of the city commission. I'm sorry, the CCB, did I say something else? HCC, sorry about that. And, and so it would, it would not be surprising to me that, that it would be under the discretion of the city commission to create term limits for the members, but I can look into that specifically if that's something the commission desires.
Would you please?
I will.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might just a quick follow-up?
Please.
So, City Attorney Doctor, then, would it be possible for us to consider passage of the resolution with a comment in the motion to strike that part? What is your recommendation to move forward pending clarification on that matter, given that the resolution for the board expires?
Mayor, commissioners, I think the best way to handle that would be to table it and consider it at a later time, if indeed you want to take that into consideration. If it doesn't affect your vote here today, then I guess you could, can take it into, you could still vote today, but I would leave that up to the commission's discretion.
Thank you. Attorney Doctor? What do you?
May I make a comment, perhaps?
Yes, please.
My understanding with, relative to the term limits is, is, so the CCB is one of a number of advisory boards. And I think the commission, as well as staff, have discussed, essentially trying to clean up the, the boards as they exist, and, and, and get them consistent one with another. And my understanding is that term limits, and this may be for the clerk, might be for manager, but, but the discussion of the term limits and the language of the term limits in this resolution deal with having a consistency across all citizens advisory boards. Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, yeah, is the short answer. I think we've had many discussions and public meetings about the commission's will for well over a year now, about standardizing and templating as much of the process for all the boards and committees that serve the commission, taking into account that there are several boards amongst those that are administrative boards and serve internally, as well as quasi-judicial boards. And so many of the boards that we are trying to standardize through my office at your request, and processes therein, are for these types of pure advisory boards like the CCB. And so term limits are in fact one of the charges that was requested by the commission through many of these discussions with you all.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor, just one more comment. I'd be a little uncomfortable with one board having a different, having no term limits, and other boards existing with a term limit structure, so I'm uncomfortable striking that language, I guess.
Yeah, but, well, right now, we're looking to see if we can table until Attorney Doctor gets us some information.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for City Attorney Doctor. The procedure for this, do we have to remove it from the consent agenda onto regular items, then we move the table?
Mayor, Commissioner Shertliff, yes. Actually, this is usually during consent agenda, died, item, not something you would actually be deliberating on, so you would likely move it to regular items, discuss it, and move to table it at that time.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to move to table the resolution reestablishing the CCB.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. City Attorney Doctor, if we table the discussion and the resolution expires, what happens?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, I am, I was unaware that there was a impending expiration, and city manager says that it, it ends at the end of this month. And so if that's the case, I would have to look into that. I guess I'm not sure exactly what happens if it expires. I'm looking at denial right now.
Attorney, would it be possible to move to extend the existing resolution by one month pending clarification and a rediscussion? Is that an option we have?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, yes, I think it would be.
If, if that's an option, then, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I would move to extend, well, to move this item off of the consent agenda. And then do we discuss it after the consent agenda, and I make the motion?
Mayor, commissioners, Commissioner Reed, Director Leland just gave me the resolution, and it's, actually expires at the end of January, so we have some time, January 29th, 2023.
Great, then we will go with Commissioner Shertliff's original motion to table, and I would gladly second that.
Any further discussion on this? Madam Clerk? It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, commissioner, commissioners, you haven't yet pulled it off the consent agenda, and perhaps that goes without being said, but to follow the procedure, I would recommend you would first ask for it to be removed from the consent... recommend you would first ask for it to be removed from the consent agenda, and then move for the tabling.
Okay, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to request, uh, that that item be, uh, removed from the consent agenda and moved to regular items. Is that all right?
No, that's okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Is this more a consent idea for the Commission to remove it from, from the consent agenda, so I think we're good there?
Okay. So, Commissioner Shertliff. Okay.
So now...
That's about now. We have removed the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a crack at a motion.
We've removed C and E, right?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept consent agenda items A, B, and D.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any finer discussion on this, on these items? Any public comments on these? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Commission proposals from the Commissioners, let's say the U. Okay, we'll move along. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Report of the interim City Manager?
Mayor, I'd like to report, uh, to the Commission that I visited with Chief Administrative Officer Bolts from Lewis and Clark County Friday morning, and Mr. Bolts informed me that the flood mitigation project that the county was proceeding with, under the minimum allocation in ARPA funds, was determined by DNRC to be ineligible. Uh, so the county commission, uh, decided to take their minimum allocation and divide it 50-50 between, uh, the city of Helena and East Helena for eligible sewer and water projects. DNRC has already looked at our projects and has determined those projects to be eligible uses of these monies. Uh, the amount of money that we're talking about is $494,913 for the city of Helena, which will allow us to reduce, uh, by that amount, uh, the money that we're borrowing for those projects. Uh, the county commission took the position to do this because it was a county allocated fund through the state of Montana, and that by doing so, this would still benefit all of the residents of Lewis and Clark County. The county commission tomorrow morning at their regular meeting is going to consider, uh, the final res, resolution that takes this action, and, uh, I just am very appreciative of the county, uh, for considering this, uh, and helping, uh, the residents, not only of Helena, but East Helena as well.
Thank you, interim manager Burton. Any comments or questions for? Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Rachel Opakow. Do we have Representative? Okay, I see she's online. You are muted.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, it's Commissioner, um, Commissioners and, uh, Mayor, um, I'm Rachel Opakow, I am from District Four, representing the Helena Citizens Council. Um, we don't have too much to report, we, um, just want to say that we are very happy that, um, we are in, kind of, being included in the city manager hiring process, um, we're looking forward to whatever we can contribute. Um, we also have, would like to let you know that we've increased our outreach, um, with larger distribution lists and more displays around town, um, so hopefully that will kind of get people more interested and more involved. Um, and we are also looking into the effects of Airbnbs and VBRs on neighborhoods, um, and this has become an important topic for us lately. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Representative. Regular items. Consider sidewalk variance requests for 34 West Sixth Avenue. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Um, the applicant, uh, of the Pennwell Building, which is located 34 West Sixth Avenue, is requesting a variance from city code 7135B5 that requires a seven-foot minimum sidewalk width. They're trying, they're making improvements at, at the building, and the photo that's up on the, on your screens is a depiction of what these sidewalk accesses would look like. So on the downstream side, you'd see there'd be steps, but on the upstream side, there'd be a flat, um, well, quote-unquote, "flat" landing to provide ADA access into the buildings. Um, they will be designed per ADA and pro-eg standards, um, that would re, um, would leave approximately five feet nine inches, um, of sidewalk in the city right-of-way. Again, this is a historic building, you know, the, um, the entrances have been problematic, and this is a, a very good solution that we have, um, worked with the, the applicant, and it's our recommendation that the, that the City Commission approve this, uh, request.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Discussion from the Commission? Comments or concerns?
Mr. Mayor? Just curious, uh, if, what you heard from, uh, adjacent property owners' businesses, uh, do you get any comment from them, or feedback?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, both, or all three of these are adjacent to the Pennwell Building, so it's one applicant. We haven't heard any public comment in regards to this, the, there's, you know, another business to the east that did try to, um, accommodate ADA access, just in a different manner. Um, this is what the applicant is proposing, and from our point of view, um, it seems to work good for both the public and for the, um, adjacent property owner.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner, any? No. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Joe Muller, and, uh, that, I, on the Pennwell Building, this is a continuina, continuation of the TIF project we undertook to get a, to get the elevator in there, and, um, you know, establishing the access, the ability to get in there, uh, kind of expanded for both of the offices and the restaurant on either side of the, the middle entrance is where the elevator will be, to, uh, bring the restaurant up to a, an easier situation to get into. Got a, an accessibility issue for somebody, the front door and the, and the office that's on the left there, there's a marketing firm that's in there, so their, so their clients and anyone that works for them has got a better, uh, situation for, uh, coming in and out of there. You can see I've worked with Dowling, um, architecture firm, uh, things get complicated, there's a lot of calculations, the staff, uh, transportation department, and everyone involved is, has been good, they're working through it, so this is kind of, uh, something that, uh, needs to fall in place, I guess, as you cross Ts and dotted Is with what the rules are for doing things in town here. I'm here if you have any questions on this, and I'll sit down, I think the second item is related to it, so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Yeah, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I moved the approval of the sidewalk variance request for 34 West Sixth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Eric de Knopki, you still on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this is a continuation of the previous item, that if you granted the sidewalk variance, an exclusive right-of-way use, um, permit would be required because of these access points are in right-of-way, and they're providing exclusive access to the building. Um, again, uh, this is a, a good project for not only the applicant, but the city, and we recommend, um, approve the exclusive right-of-way use permit for 34 West Sixth Avenue.
Thank you. Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments? Any online? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? I would move to approve an exclusive right-of-way use permit for 34 West Sixth Avenue.
It's been moved and seconded, any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Eric de Knopki, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioners, the applicant, um, at the residence 700 Cole is requesting a sidewalk variance, uh, for the minor subdivision that they are proposing, so the, as you can see, the existing residence is on the south of the lot, and they're proposing a minor subdivision of the lots to the north. These lots along McHugh will be, have boulevard sidewalk, um, complying with the 1242 and 742 of the city code. The other piece that they're requesting is to leave the condition that is existing along Cole there, as you can see, there's a parking area that's, was provided, um, back when McHugh was built. Um, this area is basically adjacent to the 700 Cole residence, this is the only parking in this area along Cole, even to the west of McHugh there. They are requesting not to put in sidewalks there per the 1242, and this, um, we're recommending the, uh, that at the bare minimum, uh, ADA ramps are installed at time of the subdivision to provide access to both, um, to the west and to the south, to the south of, along the south edge of Cole, there is a, um, shared-use path that's, um, that runs along Nature Park there. Right now, the proposal is just to provide the ADA ramp to the west, um, going over to the sidewalk, and then, um, the route of travel would be then go to the ramp that crosses Cole over to this, to the shared-use path. There's a little bit of history of that parking that we're still piecing together, um, but it is in right-of-way, it does, um, the fort, 1242 does require sidewalks to be installed on the perimeter of, um, the right-of-way along a minor subdivision, so that is why, um, we move to deny the sidewalk variance request for 700 Cole Avenue, um, minor subdivision. I'd add that the applicant could request a deferral or a waiver of protest, uh, during S.I., for an SID, if this area ever gets improved, to install those sidewalks, and I will, um, point out that if the sidewalks were installed, the property, uh, adjacent property of 700 would be the only piece along that eastern piece of Cole, there are sidewalks on the west side of Cole there, so, again, it's just a connectivity issue that has, uh, been a challenge for the city, and we'd like to see sidewalks go in, um, as much as possible to provide that connectivity for pedestrians. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Uh, comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny sidewalk variance request for 700 Cole Avenue Minor Subdivision.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero, or three to one, excuse me.
Consider residential curbside recycling collection contract. Amendment extension, Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Uh, we discussed this at a couple administrative meetings about the, uh, renewal or extension of the residential, uh, curbside recycling, and it originally came in where the city contracted out its residential collection for recycling in 2015. Again, it was updated to include glass in 2018, and now we're requ, it'll expire in two, January 1st, 2023. We are asking for a two-year extension with one-year option on the city to be able to go out possibly three years. We are requesting this because we are doing an integrated solid waste master plan with the county, so it could possibly change how we are going to do, uh, solid waste collection, which will include, will include recycling, we are looking at every aspect of the system, and so it could change dramatically, it could stay the same, do not know, but do not want to go out and change anything while we're going through the study, study. The current rate right now is $12.04, which the city pays $4.20 as a subsidy. Uh, the contractor is asking for an increase because of inflation, and they haven't had an increase since 2018, to go up to $4.00 to $16.20 per customer per month, and this is in the middle of a budget cycle, uh, so staff is proposing that we take that and pay the extra $4.00 as subsidy, it comes out to approximately 20, $36,000 for the next six months, uh, with the current, um, subscription rate of, rate at 1,500 customers, so we are saying to pick that up and pay for it through capital reserves in the residential, uh, solid waste assessment, uh, that is where the other $4.20 is coming from, so we're, uh, proposing to pick that up and then have discussions, if the subsidy continues, through the budgetary and rate discussions that'll be coming, uh, henceforth in March, February, and then going all the way till July. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, I do have the presentation, uh, from the admin meeting available if we do want to get into a serious conversation, if not, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, um, thank you, Director Leland, I appreciate, uh, the work that went in between the initial presentation and the admin meeting, um, to a proposed solution here, I am, I'm grateful for the time put in by staff to do that, uh, and I appreciate that we have an opportunity to offset, uh, the increase until the next budget discussion, so thank you for your work to everyone who was part of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I guess I would just, uh, like to say thanks for the, the work done on this initially, the, I think the staff proposal was to pass that rate increase on to users, if I remember correctly, and, and, um, I don't know that I'm either comfortable with, as, with the contract expiration looming, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, with either option, honestly, just because of the short notice and, and would like a little more public discussion, however, I'm, um, happy to err on the side of using... happy to err on the side of using reserves until we have more time and can have a fuller discussion about that. But I do think there, there is some merit to the idea of those who benefit from it paying the increased costs, some or all. And I'm going to guess that we'll have that opportunity to discuss that more fully next spring. So, and then further down the road, after the solid waste master plan is completed, that's going to be a whole another discussion that really needs to be robust with the public, because, you know, the, the expansion, the potential expansion that we found through the, oh, the waste reduction study that was done just for the city, there were some pretty significant increases proposed in that study to solid waste assessments, and in fact, more than a doubling of those assessments. So I think we want to really engage the public, not only on our existing recycling plan, but what, what will possibly be happening in the future. So I'll be supportive of this initiative to, to cover the costs with the reserves until we can have a better discussion about it. So thank you.
Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, I echo Commissioner Logan's thoughts and concerns. I think I do support this, but having a more robust discussion about the future of this with the public, I think, will be warranted, and I appreciate the work that you've all done. Thank you.
Yes, while I do agree with you all, the Commissioners, I also want to remind you all that it's not only the, the applicants that are benefiting, the city of Helena is also benefiting from this program, and so I will also support the, support us moving forward with the, with this. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online. I see no one in chambers.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was, I almost had it, Commissioner Logan.
Go for it. We're not, we're not, we'd like to hear your voice.
Uh, okay. I would move to approve the residential curbside recycling collection contract amendment extension with Helena Recycling LLC and activate solid waste residential capital reserves in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars to cover the additional monthly increase of four dollars per month per subscriber.
Second. Man, that was fast. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. I will, I'm informed that item eleven E requests an extension. However, we will have our Development Director go through that process.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. Yes, we do have an eleventh-hour request to, to table item E, which is consideration of final plat for ShopCo. This would be considered a voluntary extension of their review period of twenty days. They requested a date certain, your regular meeting on January the twenty-third, so we would need a motion, an action to, to table that until that time.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
On a roll here, so I hope I get this right. I would move to table item eleven E. That's consider the final plat for the ShopCo Minor Subdivision. Do I have the right one?
Yes.
Yes. Consider the final plat for the ShopCo Minor Subdivision, creating four new lots from ten point eight-six acres on property legally described as Lot One A, One A of the amended plat of the ShopCo Minor Subdivision in the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, filed under document number three-one-seven-one-three-two.
Come on, people.
Mayor.
Yep.
Mayor, Commissioners, I would suggest that in the motion, you consider the date certain that was requested by the applicant, which was January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. I would add to my motion ending in document number three-one-seven-one-seven-three-two, that we consider this item at our January twenty-third regular commission meeting.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Did I hear you?
Yes, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I, I would just like to make a note for the record. Due to a request that was received prior to finding the request for the extension, that my office received public comment by interested parties. Those comments have been provided to all of you, the city manager, city attorney, and copies have been provided for the public in attendance tonight and in the permanent record.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution annexing Lot Three and Four in Block Two of the Highland Park Subdivision in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and a portion of Flowery Street and Glen Avenue right-of-way adjacent there to, into the city of Helena, Montana. Director Brink, Brink.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. Yes, this is a consideration of final annexation for twenty-five-twenty and twenty-five-twenty-four Flowery Street. The resolution of intent to annex was passed in twenty nineteen. Staff is cleaning up some books and in, moving some of these forward that shouldn't have taken this long to, to move forward. But yes, tonight is consideration of resolution annexing Lots Three and Four in Block Two of Highland and Park Subdivision. You should have all the material in front of you in your packet. Essentially, this is annexation by two alpha fences, two property owners, the Allens and the Moleskies. This is part of the Granite Street, Granite Street rebate program and the West Side annexation process that, that the city's been going through for quite some time. All conditions of annexations have been, annexation has been met. That ROI was passed March twenty-fourth of twenty nineteen. They've installed all infrastructure, participated in the water and wastewater reimbursement agreement. They have a consent and waiver of protest for the SID, as well as they have two agreements for satisfaction of conditions to defer the installation of streets and sidewalks until such time there's a identified improvement project, and they will participate in a pro, right of share of whatever that, that program will be. Like I said, all the applicants have met all the conditions of annexation resolution. That was passed March twenty-fifth, and staff recommends move to approve a resolution annexing Lots Three and Four in Block Two of the Highland Park Subdivision, Lewis Clark County, Montana, and then portions of Flowery Street and the Glen Avenue rights-of-way adjacent thereto into the city of Helena, Montana.
Thank you, Director Brink. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment online, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution annexing Lots Three and Four in Block Two of the Highland Park Subdivision in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the portions of Flowery Street and Glen Avenue rights-of-way adjacent thereto into the city of Helena, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution relating to the financing of proposed wastewater systems improvement establishing compliance and reimbursement bond regulation under the Internal Revenue Code. Director Danielson, is this?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
There you are. You're online. Okay.
I am online, yeah. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. So tonight I have before you a reimbursement resolution. This particular reimbursement resolution to, is for two wastewater projects for financing that we intend to take from the state of Montana, Department of Natural Resources and Conservation Pollution Control State Revolving Fund Loan Program. That was a lot of words. It's for the, one project for approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to replace a submersible pump station, and another project for eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand for designing, engineering, and constructing improvements to the city's wastewater collection system, including rehabilitating old sewer pipes and cured-in-place pipes at multiple locations throughout the city. So by passing this reimbursement resolution, it allows us to reimburse ourselves from expenditures prior to actually financing for the bond, and I am open to questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution relating to the financing of proposed wastewater system improvements establishing compliance with the reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, I see here, public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. That should not be on your.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking all over the place. Okay, thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission?
Mayor, Commissioners, the two consent agenda items that were moved to regular agenda items need to be addressed.
You're right. Okay, we'll start with resolution re-establishing CCB. Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have any comment to offer, anything differently than I did before. I mean, the, I, I was comfortable with the resolution as it was in the packet and, but understand that there are some that have some concerns about some of the language. We have, you know, passed that on to the attorney for review, and I guess we'll get this at some point in January.
I thought that's what we did, huh?
Yeah, I think, I think what we did was we were going to pull it and then essentially table.
Yeah, until you got back to us.
Mayor, Commissioners, yes, you would just make a motion to table it, vote on the motion, and you could.
Be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to table the item, the, dealing with the resolution re-establishing the CCB.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Regular item, E, a resolution, rescinding resolution number two-zero-four-nine-five and two-zero-six-three-nine to eliminate the monthly water and wastewater charges that fund the residential water and wastewater service line replacement loan program and amending resolution to two-zero-four-eight-eight. You're back. You have the floor.
Mayor, Commission, just trying to frame the, the conversation right now as far as what this is, is it's a resolution to, to reduce the fees or get rid of the fees for collecting the service line for both water and wastewater. And at this time, we have about nine-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in the water fund, and in the wastewater fund, we have one point eight million. We had come to the Commission to say that we would bring these funds forward once we have a little more time to do legal review, and then also have a robust conversation during the budget process on what and how we might use these funds or keep them in place and continue this, the program as it is with the zero percent financing. So we were going to bring this further, but we wanted to get the, the funds reduced because we have a substantial amount in both funds. If you'd be happy to ans, or ask any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Mayor, so thank you for indulging me on this, I guess. So we last visited this in November. When I read the staff memo, it sounded as if that the resolution to this was to keep the money and continue the program until we exhaust the money, which at the current burn rate seemed like it was about forty years or roughly an estimate, but, but it doesn't sound like that that's, it, it sounds like we're going to have some more discussion on how we deal with this money. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, it is. That was the original plan, and there was just giving some background information that it would last that long if we want to, to give justification to get rid of the fees, but our intent was to bring this forward to the Commission, have a more robust conversation on if we want to continue the program, how we want to continue the program, and what to do with the existing funds that we have in there.
Okay, so I had some questions, assuming that, that we were going to, that this matter would kind of resolve tonight, but it sounds like we've got ways to go, if I'm hearing that correctly. Do you want these questions now? Do you want me to deal with them offline? What would be the best approach, given that this discussion will come up in the future?
Mayor, this item will be coming forward again, and probably as many times as it needs to, until the governing body's comfortable to make decisions. What we do know is that we feel the program is capitalized, and therefore the recommendation to reduce the fees. Is it overcapitalized, undercapitalized? I think that needs to be a further policy discussion with the governing body. Continuing the program, and I know that we've helped a number of people, but I think we want to have a full, complete discussion on that policy position with the Commission as well, and we thought that the best opportunity to do that is through the broader budget discussion this spring.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is helpful. So I, I'll hold on to my questions to work through that process, but I do, I do have a comment or comments that I'd like to make just relative to, you know, why I asked that this be pulled from the consent agenda, and I, I gotta say, I, I really appreciate Mr. Aznav's comments and, and agree with the merit behind the program. You know, I, I understand that it's of value to some that have experienced loss with service lines, and I, I don't doubt that at all, and, but it's, you know, we, we collected almost three million dollars and paid out about two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand in loans, so it's, it's not been a program that's been used. But what I, what I have had difficulty with is how the city went about funding this solution, and I've talked about this many times, and, and, you know, particularly whether this charge that was added to utility bills was a tax or whether it was an assessment. But I'm not going to talk about that again tonight. I guess I'd like to approach it a little bit from a different angle, and that is the, the charges that were collected, that, that of fairness and addressing it from what I would consider an old idea, that is wrapped up in free societies, and that is the consent of the governed. That is, we, the government, can exercise a power such as financially levying against a property if the exercise of that power is supported by the people, the governed that it impacts. So for example, when we create a special district, we send out forms to those who are impacted, that, who have to finance that district by mail, and this gives them the opportunity to support or oppose the exercise of that power. Or when we create a new Or, when we create a new tax to fund a certain initiative, think recently, the fire safety levy in 2018, we put it to a vote of the people, as was required by our charter and state law. So, such initiatives stand or fall by the will of the people. But in the case of this particular program, in my opinion, the only notice, as far as I can tell, that the city gave to the public was that of standard meeting notices that happens with every one of our public meetings. The people, for the most part, didn't know that they were going to be charged for this program. We didn't get the consent of the governed, in my opinion. And I think it's interesting to note that in the last two examples that I used, the fire safety levy and the service line repair loan program, over $900,000 annually were raised by each of these collections. But one was voter-approved, and the other was not. So, in terms of fairness to the ratepayers who didn't have a say, I got to say, I'm still interested in exploring the idea of rebating in some fashion, the money that's left over. And I'm supportive of the proposed resolution to eliminate the collection of fees that staff has brought forward tonight, and I'm very thankful for that. But I'm not supportive of continuing this program as it exists. I think there are other solutions for homeowners, such as conventional loans, homeowner's insurance, sewer water insurance programs. And if you remember back to... Some of us will remember back to August of 2020, when I invited some folks from Sandy, Utah, to come and talk about that, how that program worked in their municipality. And HomeServe, which is a program that has been endorsed by the Montana League of Cities and Towns. I think they would more effectively serve our customers and eliminate the administrative burden that staff has in conducting this program. I'm going to end on a comment about Home Serve. Earlier this month, I spoke with Laura Lynch, who is the Utilities Operations Manager in the city of Great Falls. About three years ago, they partnered with Home Serve to provide coverage for customers' service lines at zero cost to the city of Great Falls. The program provides coverage for repair, replacement, and maintenance to customers who choose to opt in in stark contrast to our imposed fee at the cost of a little over $12 a month. In the event of service line failure, they will pay, not loan, for the loss up to $8,500. She said she's heard nothing but positive feedback from her utilities customers. And because of the partnership, the city of Great Falls receives a payment for each customer contract that has added up to about $13,000 for each of the first two years of their association with Home Serve. And the city is able to use those funds as they see fit. The cities of Missoula, Billings, and Bozeman are similarly associated. And so, it seems like a good and a fair approach and where the customers choose to pay into a program as to one that was imposed on them. So, I'm certainly appreciative that discussion will continue, and I think there's a lot of options out there. Definitely supportive of the resolution that staff has brought regarding the elimination of fees. So, thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me. I appreciate it.
You bet. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? On this topic for now. Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, Greg Worth at 501 State Street, as a citizen. I'm also the board chair of Habitat for Humanity, and I just also want to express my support for this program. I'm also a ratepayer into the program, and I do think it's a neighbors helping neighbors type program. I appreciate the city taking a check-in on the program. It hasn't been fully utilized, and I think, you know, to try and get it right the first time, it would have been unreasonable. But to see where the money's at, you know, it hasn't been utilized. But where it has been utilized, it's been extremely important to keep people in their homes. So, I think supporting the resolution tonight to eliminate the fees is a good check-in. To provide commentary for further discussion, I do think we need to keep this program for city Helena residents, to keep people in their homes, possibly a revolving loan program similar to sidewalk program or solar panel program, you know, and cap it at, you know, $300,000, $200,000. As far as, you know, rebate, rebating the excess funds, I understand there might be some complications into that. Possibly, we can just delay a rate increase to the water and sewer systems. So, just to avoid complications. But I do want to express from a point of keeping people in their homes, I think this would be a good program for the city of Helena to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. Do you have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Any finer discussion from the body? Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, at this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to... Yes, go ahead. What's that?
I jumped the gun, Mayor. I apologize.
Okay, so at this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission on any topic?
Do we need to approve that resolution then?
Yeah, Mayor, I think we need to vote on the resolution.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean. I mean, I apologize, Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve a resolution rescinding resolution numbers 20495 and 20639 to eliminate the monthly water and wastewater charges that fund the residential water and wastewater service line replacement programs, excuse me, replacement loan programs, and amending resolution number 20488, which will take effect for the January billing cycle.
Second.
Any finer discussion? And I want some clarification on this resolution. Manager Burton, the resolution rescinding resolution 2049 and 20639 to eliminate the monthly water and wastewater charges that fund the residential. What are we seeing here?
Mayor, every month, ratepayers in the water and sewer fund pay a certain dollar amount that goes into the replacement program.
Yes.
This eliminates that fee, that portion of the water and sewer fee, moving forward.
So, then, why are we going to be... Why are we... What are we going to be discussing later?
Mayor, I think it's necessary to discuss... We have the program.
Yes.
And it's capitalized to a certain dollar amount on the water side and the sewer side. If the Commission's comfortable with that, then we leave the money where it is, and we use it for the existing program. If you feel that we could capitalize it at a different rate, then we've talked, do we lower water and sewer rates for a period of time? Do we do a refund, which is... We're looking at the legality of that. So, I think it's really looking at a recognition with the passage of these resolutions that we're adequately capitalized with the program. Let's reduce the fee, but let's keep this item in front of us through the next budget process so that the governing body can weigh in on these other policy-related issues.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
So, I think one of the things we heard at the administrative meeting in November was that there was fairly significant cost to the administration of this program on the part of the finance staff, who it's, you know, based on what we heard at that meeting, sounded like, you know, they're not entirely set up for dealing with a loan program. So, one of the questions that I would have moving forward is, and not for tonight, but is what are those? You know, how much time, how much cost is there in administering these loans? So, that's a question for the future. So, I think there's room, in my opinion, for future discussion on how to proceed forward with this program.
Go ahead. Mayor, thank you. And Commissioner Logan, I think that you bring up a good point. But it's not just related to administering loans for the water and sewer program. We also have a housing trust fund. We have sidewalk programs. And all of those have been created over time throughout various divisions in the city, and they've never been brought together as one program with various elements and staffing collectively across the board has never been considered. And so, I think we are putting together that type of analysis of the workload through the finance department, and I expect that that will be a part of the budget coming up this spring as well.
So, this vote is to stop the collection of these fees? Go ahead, Attorney Doctor.
Mayor Commissioners, just to put the city manager's explanation into the language of the motion and the agenda item, resolution rescinding the two first numbers, 20495 and 20639, were the two resolutions that created the fee. And then, the resolution 20488 is the resolution that actually created the program. And so, you can see by the language here, you would be rescinding the fees by rescinding the two resolutions that created the fee, and you'd be amending the program so that it doesn't have a fee attached to it. And so, that's just interpretation of what this language is, and to answer your question about what is it we're doing with this motion.
Thank you. Now, I understand. So, where I'm at with this is we usually hear a lot of public comments on issues concerning the city. And quite frankly, I've heard good comments about this program versus discontinuing a program. And I'm not in support of this. And so, I'm going to be voting against it. Commissioners, any others? Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think I already made the motion. I think we're at the vote part.
I apologize. Has it been seconded? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer discussion? Madam Clerk? Do we have any public comments? We already did that. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion carries three to one.
Thank you. At this time, are we done? At this time, is there any... Anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Any finer discussion? This meeting is adjourned.